Doug Miller to come up and say the dedication for this evening. Doug, just push that button and that will turn off.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us, for the creation that you give us to be a part of, to experience day in and day out. Even today, as the temperatures were rising, the rain came and cooled things off to refresh the ground that has gotten a bit dry over the last few days. So we just keep you thanks and know that you have everything under your control. Father, I recall reading in your scripture that you say all authority is under your control, that you have ordained it. So Father, I pray for the city council, for our mayor, Father, that they are hearing your voice, that they are following your leading through the work of the Holy Spirit. Father, we know that there are those throughout our community who are sick, who are hurting, Father, even some who are at death's door. We pray, Father, for those. Lift them up. Pray for the citizens of our city, for our county, who have just in the last few days even lost loved ones. Father, replenish their soul with your hope. So Father, we are here tonight and we just ask that you would be honored by all that is done. It's in Jesus' name that we pray.
Amen.
Art, we've got a few minutes to still set up.
Just a few minutes.
Okay, this time, is there anything that the council would like to add to the agenda?
I don't know if this is a concern.
We'll go ahead and, since it's a work meeting, we can go ahead and switch around a few things. It's not as official as an actual council meeting. If Jamie Baker, the Chamber of Commerce, can come up. Sorry, Jamie. And there's a microphone back there on the end.
I probably project pretty well.
Awesome.
I come to you tonight with some good news. For those of you that have not heard, Wolf Steel has announced a 30 job expansion here in Kripton. It's about a $5 million project. And so that's pretty amazing. We've been working, our office, not only do I do Chamber of Commerce, but I do economic development and tourism. And we've been working with the Economic Development Cabinet at the state for the last few weeks to kind of broker the deal and get some things moving that they needed to happen. And so that's really good news for Kripton and for Great County because they're a good company. They've been here since 1988. They pay good wages and they continue to expand. And we, I believe, are their only other property outside Canada. And so that's something that we can be very proud of. A couple of years ago, or maybe about a year ago, the Prime Minister of Economic Development, basically, in Canada, came to Kripton, to the facility, and toured. And that's just kind of an unheard of thing to happen. So again, very good news for Kripton. It'll be over a 10-year expansion plan, but they will be expanding. And that's a good thing. So. And the other thing that I wanted to talk to you about, I know you're going to have a presentation here on Oakwood Development, and I'm not here to tell you to approve, disprove what you should do as a council. What I'm going to tell you is, if we want economic development in Grant County, and we want restaurants, and we want those things that our community needs to support the tourism industry, we have to have rooftops to do that. And it's kind of a, if you talk to the restaurant industry, they want hotels, hotels want restaurants. But really, the bottom line is that we've got to have more people, we've got to have more rooftops, because that's what shores up our workforce. Because the last thing you want to happen in the community is for, say, the Wolf Steel expansion, or another industry to come in and just rob workers from other factories and industries that we already have. That doesn't solve our problem, that just creates a bigger one. So the solution is, to the workforce, one of the solutions is that we have to have more rooftops. So I would say to you, the decision rests with you all what that looks like. But if we can attract higher-end developments that do appeal to professionals, you're going to bring in more businesses that are of a higher end, which is a better tax base, to Great County and to the city of Kripton. And so those are very important when it comes to economic development. So again, I will never tell you how to vote on something, but I will tell you that if you ask me what it is that we need, we've got to have more rooftops, we've got to have more residents, we've got to have more people. And the biggest thing that you hear, and it's not just in Great County or Kripton either, across the country, is a labor shortage. We've got a labor shortage of people willing to work. And I know a lot of you all know that because you work out in the public sector and you hear that frequently. So we get more people, we get more people working, we get more money on taxes and in the school systems and that kind of thing. Do you all have any questions for me or anything? I just wanted to come down and share our good news with you and then tell you about rooftops. There's a lot of projects we're working on that involve Kripton. We've got the trail project that we're really excited about. That was a, over a million dollar grant that we got, unheard of. They gave us everything we asked for. There are pieces of that trail that are already in place, but we've got to do some roadway work and then connect the other things. And you can say, well, what's the big deal about that? It's a trail. It actually feeds truth. You're going to give people things to do. And that's, people are coming to Great County. The yard is drawn in at least a million visitors a year. We know that, the numbers are there, our hotel numbers are up. But we've got to give people things to do, places, reasons to stay in Great County, spend their money. And a trail that's wanting to use like that will do something like that. Next year is our 200th birthday. We've got a lot of things we're working on as far as big celebrations. Farm to Table is an event we're working on. Eventually, I want to bring that to Kripton. We want to, we just want to, it's a lot of moving parts, but there's a lot of good things happening, not just in Kripton, but all over Great County that we're working on. And I really, I'm an optimist, but I believe over the next few years, we'll see some really positive things happen. Yes, sir.
Do they have a projected start date of when?
I believe it will start right away, but it is a 10-year project. So. But yeah, I believe, I mean, they're doing the land acquisition, they're doing all the steps that they need to. And it's one of those where, you know, a lot of the things that I do on the economic development side are always done confidentially, so you can never say anything. And everybody's really tight-lipped. It's one of those truly, if I tell you, I'd have to kill you kind of thing. So. But I'm being silly with that. But to answer your question, I think they're going to get started right away. At least because it'll take them a while to get the expanded facility. Anything else? I'll be happy to come back anytime. I know you all have a lot on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to come down with that. If you all have any questions, please, I'd rather hesitate to call me. The public is welcome. The Chamber of Commerce is listed in the phone booth. You can usually get me there. And if not, leave a message and I'll be happy to call back. We've got a lot of good projects we're working on for Great County right now. So it's a, it's a good time, very good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Art Harden is the engineer that's been checking the book and doing the work for the Oakwood project that we've looked into. And he wanted to bring this, this down, this PowerPoint, and answer some questions for the Oakwood residents. We know you have a few questions for him. And I'm just going to go ahead and turn that over to Art Harden and him as forward as anyone. He does the best.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, my name is Art Harden with Caliber Engineering. We were contacted by the mayor back in January to maybe give an opinion of what some issues were with the Oakwood Drive. As the residents know, there's some issues there with some drainage and like their, so what I wanted to do is kind of give you a little idea of... Okay. A lot of people, or I guess most people probably do know where it's at. It's off of Violet Road, Oakwood Drive. And this is a subdivision that was actually created in 1977. So that gives you an idea of how long it's been there. It was actually created long before there were a lot of drainage regulations, a lot of federal drainage regulations, state regulations. So drainage was pretty much, you just let it go. So with that, in January, late January, I did a quick report and just did a quick evaluation with the mayor. And he told us, in general, the area has little or no control over stormwater generated by the roadway. In other words, there's no curbs on the roadway, there's very little on the way, catch basins. There's a couple of ditches that are semi-functional. But in general, there's nothing there. Grading between several of the homes does not provide for a good drainage in between the homes. And with no control of the runoff, the roadway pavement adds approximately 46 acres of runoff just straight down the road. What we looked at as a possible solution is program for the construction of curb and gutters along the roadway and construction of an underground drainage system and a couple drainage structures. Looked at developing some guidelines for grading in between homes. Some of the homes drain directly from one house right straight down to the other. With that, and then each of the homes needs to install some kind of downstream collection, because even though you're not dumping the water onto your property, it goes downhill. And if it could be collected and directed out behind your house, then it would work out a little bit better for the people that are downstream. These are some pictures that I took when I came up for that. This is going south on the roadway, getting up to the top of the hill. And looking down, you can see that there's no curbs, it's just straight pavement that goes down. This roadway is about 800 feet. So you've got about 600 feet straight of just roadway with no real stormwater system. And that's looking back up the hillside. Now, this is one house down toward the end. If you notice, there's a drainage swell in between the two. And that's been created by the homeowner. That's a similar concept of what needs to be done for most of the homes. This is another home. If you see this one, it drains directly from the house on the right, all the way over to the house on the left. And the downstream and the dump out right at the bottom of the hillside. What we've been proposing is there's generally two types of curbs to use on roadways. The ones down at the bottom are a straight vertical curb. We looked at those and started looking and said, if we have to put a drop curb at every driveway, every access point all along the road, then you're going to end up with basically no curb, because there are a lot of number of accesses, either gravel or concrete driveways. So what we went back and looked at is what we call a mountable curb, one that you can drive over. And it's the one that's on the top there. It's very common in a lot of residential areas. So the program that we developed is one that will put in a curb on each side of the roadway, and we'll put in an underground storm system. I've been working with the mayor. We're looking at the final outfall location. That's all going to work out. I don't refer to curb as to where we're going to go with that. But in general, once we get this done, it will not solve all ills in terms of people that have drainage issues. If you still have, if you can back up here. If you see the light contour lines that are right along through there, those are contour elevations. And the, based off of that, and from looking out in the field, you can see it obviously, is that the roadway was built on top of a ridge. So everything from the road drains to the house, in most cases. If it doesn't drain to the house, it drains into the end of the yard and then on down to the next house. So it's difficult to try to collect something that you're on the high side. If you have a block foundation, block foundations are very poor, very porous from groundwater. So if you have a groundwater condition, this solution will not solve that. But it will collect a lot of the surface water, which is what we think is a big controlling factor right now. So with that, that's our program as it stands, to put curb and gutter all the way down, as well as an underground storm system. We have targeted this next month to complete plans. And I get it out for bid, we would like to get it done before the end of the year. Any questions?
Any questions from the community?
Yes, I live at the bottom of the hill. And I researched the road. There's five houses that have no downstream scoring to the corrugated pipe. That will help the yard, not so much the road. Can you not change the slope of the road with this plan?
Well, the idea is that on the end of the roadway, right down here, we will have curb all the way around that. So that will basically collect whatever water is coming down the roadway, collected in. We have, right now, we've programmed two catch basins to go in that area. Actually, a catch basin and a trench area, because it's so flat.
Yes.
So we'll have two structures down there to collect the water and then control it going down the hillside.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Once you collect it, where are you going to send it?
It'll be collected into a pipe and then run down along one of the property lines.
But where's it going to dump out at?
It'll dump out toward the creek.
Yeah, those creeks that go all the way around.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to see it there.
No, there's a creek that flows right down in through here.
Gotcha.
Both sides.
And then about how much money are we talking about for this project?
Right now, we're looking at around $125,000. And I know the mayor's been looking at funding for that.
Just this past week, Art, we did a confirmation from Mersey Roading Fund. It's predicted that half the money is will be approved and has to be signed off by the commissioner. So we're in hopes that that will happen. That will save the city quite a bit. And also, they've advised that they're going to push to talk with the commissioner to try to get the remaining amounts taken care of. So it's something that we're really working hard on.
Well, I'm Darryl Wilson. I live down there where you showed that picture of that ditch. I dug that ditch. It was a lot deeper then, over time. But new homes have been built, ground's been moved, dirt's moved when the rain comes. But with that being said, there's been a lot of water coming down that road. Now, first off, the city's heard this, and I just want to get it out to you, so you'll know, you being the engineer, you'll know what the problem I'm having down there with this water. I have a retaining wall that holds pretty much my footer of my house up, around my house. Over time, of all this water, I'm sure they've showed you some of the videos. I mean, you might have been there, maybe it had drizzled or something like that. But we do have some times where water really comes down that road. So with that being said, this, over time, it's destroyed my back wall. And with now, recently, most recently, within two months, I've lost a corner of my back of my house. I mean, it's dropped. It hasn't dropped no feet or anything. Like we're, I'm figuring maybe three inches, two inches. So something's given underneath my house from all this rain that I've dealt with. All these, I mean, 11 years I've been dealing with this. You know, 10 years, 10 years since I owned the house. I brought it to the previous council, previous mayor, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, nothing ever happened. Now we bring it in front of this council and this mayor, they're a little bit more convincing that they're going to do something. Now, with that being said, there was already supposed to have been a budget set forth in June, because we, or June or July, because we couldn't amend previous to that date. Don't know what that was all about. But anyway, now I'm hearing that we can amend it if there's not enough money. Now I'm hearing that we're going outside looking for the money to fix the problem. This problem should have been addressed a long time ago.
Yeah, our taxes were raised last year.
And with that being said, you know, a lot of these homes on this street have been damaged. Numerous people that are in here tonight, I mean, how many people here who live in Oakwood, live on Oakwood. All their basements, some of them had to have sump pumps put in over the years since I've been there. They've had, what you have done in your house?
Have a dry come out, sealed, drainage all around.
That's what we did.
And I don't think, you know, previous to a lot of these new homes being built, over time, I mean, it was most recently, as in what, two years?
Three in ounces.
Three in the last two years?
Yes.
And before that, maybe four or five within the last 10.
Okay, let me elaborate. Everybody that's speaking, hopefully you've signed the book so we can refer back to what you're stating. And we're just going to kind of get a hold of this right here. We had talked, Darryl, numerous times.
I'm moving along, but I'm moving along. Can I please?
Hold on, hold on. We've talked numerous times. I've told you several times. You said somebody mentioned that, that we cannot amend the budget, it's illegal. I advise you that it gets amended in every city several times each year. It's not illegal to amend the budget.
Well, I was seeing February and it was, was you here? Brad, you all was here. Cheryl, would you hear? They said they couldn't amend it, right?
Yeah, we don't have the floor. Hold on just a moment.
Oh, I had the floor, you took it.
Hold on. That's because I'm the chair.
Okay.
But here's the deal. We've been working strenuously to try to get this taken care of. This man standing in front of you has worked strenuously to show us what we need to do as a council. And I'm not, you know, saying I'm speaking for the council, but I am part of the council. And we are doing what we can do to help this community. We do care, not just a little bit. We care enough to put hours in every day to call, make phone calls and try to get this taken care of. So, so let's, let's regroup this and take, any more questions from anybody?
I still got questions about the road.
One more, Derek.
One more. How can I drum someone? Where, actually, I want to know, are you going to widen the road any, when you put these curbs in? Because the road's really not even official, I don't think. I mean, for like passing cars, people are getting their yards torn up because of, you know, having to go out of, out of the way for buses, trash, man, cars, whatever. So with these curbs, are we going to get a little bit of widening so we can get up through there?
You won't get much widening with that. And part of the reason for that is, it goes back to the way the road was constructed originally. If we go in and we widen it out, then it's the drop off between the curb and the driveways on, you know, the existing drive. So what I'm looking at and I'm concerned about as far as widening, is you don't want to take a widened road too much and then have the cars hang up as they go across the curb. So that's one thing that we're looking at. It is a tight road. Like I say, this was built back in 77. So we're, we're trying to, as to quote somebody else, what is his lipstick on? Paint a little bit. We're trying to fix it and solve a drainage situation, not necessarily rebuild the entire road.
But the front of the yards where it dips down before it meets the road, that's a nice little flow through there. I mean, so the water comes off the yard, doesn't make it to your curb that you're going to have.
Well, that's where we're putting in, we lay out an existing storm system when we're done. It goes all the way from almost the top of the hill down. So we're putting in a substantial amount of storm grade pipes and catch basins all along there to collect it all.
Yeah. I'm just saying for future reference, that when we do move forward and do things in the city, I don't know what kind of programs are set into place for this. But I mean, the guys that come in and built those three homes, I was there, I seen the work going on. And, you know, who's saying this has to be, the land has to be pitched a certain way? And who's saying that the, you know, the draining off of the roof of the house, I mean, when the man built my house, you know, that was inspected and it was done correctly, where there is a system and it runs on back, you know, and I'm happy for that. But who's, who walked off and just left it like that? Who's the God who says you can't do that? And if we don't have one, we need one. Just to suggest.
There was no city inspectors down there. I watched it being gray. I was recently heard, and I was inspecting a home, and I watched it being gray, the house next to us. And they were there, on, off, loaded, done in the month of February, in an hour and 15 minutes, they graded that. And we took care of that land for two years with a push car. And it was flat with a semi-hill. And if you pull it back up, you'll see it, it just, I mean, it was terribly green. There was no city inspector down there, or none.
I'm getting off point here, and I'm not saying I'm a street.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is there any council members that want to add to, to what Mr. Martin has played or anything to the public?
I think it's a good plan.
Derek, I have a question straight to you and then I'll go. With the drainage that he's shown, on a percentage, what do you think that would do for your house where you're at?
If he's telling me they're going to trap it on the road, right?
Correct.
And we're going to trap it in the gully, the little swell or...
Correct.
You're going to trap it. I see it being no problem, once he does that. But he's got to trap it on both sides. You can't, if they're not going to widen it so that water can run off them little sloped, you showed me a little where you could drive up on it, right?
Yeah.
So if it meets the level of the ground where there's some fall from the yards into that, then you wouldn't really need the extra drainage in the center, right? Because you're bringing the road a little bit wider. I think everybody here agrees, at least a percentage of us agree, that we have no problem with giving that little extra so we can catch this water. I know I agree to it because I'm being hit.
Yeah, part of what I'm doing with that, and explaining, is when we bring the stormline down the side of the road, we will be putting in the storm, put the stormline in about where the ditch line is. So we'll be tying into that. We're also going to put catch basins in that ditch line so that it's caught before it gets built up going down through there. So that, that's part of the program. We have like three catch basins in the ditch line, and I think we have eight catch basins in the roadway, not counting the ones at the end of the cul-de-sac.
And that's up the hill too, right?
That's up the hill.
We're going to catch even on the other side of the slope, like at the beginning?
The other side, we're taking a look at, that doesn't seem to have the drainage issues as major as what the, the south side does. So we've been focused on the drainage on the south side and how far we're going to take it up toward Violet Road.
So you're putting drains on one side of the street and not the other?
No, catch basins will be on both sides.
Okay.
We'll have to cut, we'll be cutting the road.
Okay.
And put a cross pipe in.
Okay.
But the main, the main conduit for the flow will be on one side.
Opposite of the water line?
Yes.
Because I think the water line comes down one side and then it branches.
Correct.
Now, one more real quick, because I got to go to bed. I'm trucking around, I got to get up 2:00 in the morning. There's a fire hydrant issue also, Mayor. We've spoke about this. I spoke to one of the gentlemen for the water company, been there 20 years, don't know his name, but I believe the fire chief here knows him. He told me that it would be up to the street to pay to have that pipe extended so we could get a fire hydrant down there. That the street would have to pay for that. And I brought it to the chief's attention before you come in here, but I just, you know, a lot of these people who live on Oakwood don't know about that, that there's only...
That's something we need to discuss.
There's only one fire hydrant, and it's at the beginning of the street. And we've lost a couple of homes now because, one, first one of them was lost because there wasn't no water pressure to get the water to put the fire out. So they had to pump it all the way up the street. The reason why I'm saying this, because you're already going to be on the street digging, right? Not per se you, but whoever contracts it out. The hole will be there. Why not go ahead and let's get the... Why not go ahead and let's get the pipe laid too, and get that all knocked out, let's just finish this right up, and you won't have to see me or hear me again, unless I'm paying my taxes. And I'm outta here, I'm going to bed.
Okay. Is we ready?
You wanna know, Kim?
I have a question. I'll see y'all later.
Hey, make sure you don't lock me.
You locked out?
Aye.
Hello, that? Are we just gonna give this problem to somebody else?
Well, it all flows down.
No. Grab something on your truck.
Dispensing it out, down by the tree, and it'll still, you still have the same amount of water, it's just we're controlling where it goes into the creek.
Well, my concern is, does anybody's property on that creek run, if you're gonna triple that creek on a good, hard rainy day, following all this water, are we gonna push their water problems onto somebody else?
Not really, because, and the reason I say that is, I just don't wanna see us correct their problem.
Correct. To call somebody else.
Call somebody else. The thing is, is, you know, we're collecting this water here, and all that water really, right now, runs down and goes in the creek right here, and then it comes in here as well. So, what we're looking at doing is bringing it on down, and collecting it and putting it into that same area, so it's going into the same spot. We're not increasing pavement significantly, because we're only talking about maybe, you know, a foot wider, two-foot wider on the roadway, so you're not really increasing the amount of pavement runoff that you have. And collecting it in the pipe, well, once we do that, we'll put an energy dissipator in that.
It's draining, four miles. So, it used to go left, right, up, down, whatever. Now, we're keeping it where we want it to go. It's this creek. Our property's saying, we're gonna half mile it, let's enter that creek, it's gonna be effective.
Anything within a half mile, no difference.
That's all I need.
Could we, Bertie, please?
That's okay, the gentleman, I mean, again, the property is draining all ready into a natural collection, which is the creek. The water is gonna be basically the same, except for what we're buried from people's houses. But we'll be dumping instead of a natural flow into a controlled flow. That is a farm, tree line, with creek, natural catch basin, so we're not gonna be increasing anything there. It will be nice, because with that...